Well, that's it's close to the good idea for you all.
Stephanie's bringing something back.
Okay, well, we're now reconvened from executive session, so we'll now accept a motion to approve the executive session apped dated.
Salute.
We have a motion.
Say it.
And a second, any discussion, all in favor, okay? The second thing is, we need a motion to amend the agenda regarding the executive session, so I'll talk to the county attorney.
Resolution to amend the agenda out of public necessity to add a resolution approving an amendment to the employment agreement between the county and the county manager.
Okay, we have heard that recommendation, so is there a motion to approve to amend the agenda for as stated?
Moves approved.
We have a motion.
Say it.
And a second, any discussion, all in favor, okay?
And next will be the resolution itself, resolution approving an amendment to the employment agreement between the county and the county manager, and as we discussed, this will extend the county manager's employment agreement through and until May 5th, 2020, to authori- to give the board and the manager time to work out the details.
Okay, are there any questions or comments regarding that? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
So, second motion and a second, any discussion, all in favor, okay? Thank you. All right, well, we now move back into the agenda regarding the last budget department, which is the Board of Commissioners' budget, so I'll ask the county clerk if she can put up on the screen the information regarding the Board of Commissioners' budget. Due to open records, open meetings, this is our time to discuss what is presented before you, and of course, to make any thoughts or revisions, but as we can see, that our FY20 budget is nine hundred and one thousand, six hundred and three, you see that at the bottom, and there is being a proposed of ninety-six, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, one oh five, which is about a sixty-four thousand dollar increase, and the thing that is to note about that is that that increase basically is related to a proposed lobbyist, which is about forty-eight thousand dollars. The other increase of about ten thousand dollars relates to the A R C dues increase, which is based on population, and also the A C C G increase, which is actually predicted to increase every year by two point five percent. So, if you will note, again, regarding the accomplishments of the current budget that we have, we, you know, do have more focus on constituent services with town hall meetings, H O A communications, there are five constituent aides that are budgeted. Also, in twenty twenty, this year and last year, we had more joint meetings regarding the board's strategy itself, just began having conversations about visioning and so forth, and priorities. There have been joint meetings that has been part of this too, regarding service delivery strategies, a joint meeting regarding legislators, and of course, there's been some with cities, but as you can see, we still have a part of our budget which is related to agency memberships with A C C G, A R C, the National Association of Counting Officials, the Chamber, the Georgia Minority Business Association, and then, of course, we have certifications, training, and education related to all the education, travel, and training that we've had. Again, I've, we've spent about sixty-one percent of the budget, which is about where we should be at this time of the year. We did, again, just highlight, again, the details of what the sixty-four thousand-plus-dollar increase is related to, but again, if you look down at the key issues, one of the things that this board is encouraged to continue to do is to continue to clarify joint county vision and setting short and long-term priorities for the counting. And so, that is the budget that is presented to the Board of Commissioners Department, but this is a time to address any questions, comments, or make any revisions or changes. Again, we've got the same process as everyone else. We'll have to, you know, again, and this is the first draft of what is in the budget and what is proposed as an increase. We do know if we're gonna have some type of lobbyist, we need some level of a legislative strategy, which we've already heard a couple of things, if that is what the board chooses to do. So I'll pause now and address any questions that you may have. Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and then go to Commissioner Wilson.
So what you have on the fiscal year twenty accomplishments, is, all of that is transferring over to the next year, correct?
Correct, actually, what you see listed for twenty are the things that we've done so far, from the last budget cycle beginning in nineteen, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, which ends in June, June or July.
So nothing's changing, but we're increasing by sixty-four, four seventy-five?
Yeah, and to keep in mind that part of the increase is due to the payment of, due to other agencies, and that usually happens every year. That's about ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, and A C C G is part of that increase, the A R Cs, but those are based, and the A R Cs increase is based on
Those are self-explanatory.
Is based on that. If you do see that there is twenty-five hundred dollars noted, just in case there is a change of elected officials.
So I wanna know, what, you put forty-eight thousand for lobbyists, the county commissioners don't need a lobbyist, we don't need, I don't need a lobbyist for a county commissioner, what is that lobbyist for? If it's for our transportation department, if it's for whatever, I don't know that our county commissioners' budget, it should come out of that, so I wanna, I wanna more explanation on the lobbyists, and then, the newly-elected B O C members, twenty-five hundred dollars, what does that do, and who does that go to, and what is that for?
So, let's start with the lobbyists. First of all, there, this board would determine what the lobbyist does on the legislative, and this is again, if we come up with a legislative agenda going forward, so that would be up to us, as to whether we want one or not, we've had one in the past, and I think the county manager can kinda help us respond to, because it actually was managed by the county manager before, when we had a lobbyist, but again, it was for a short period of time, this one that is here is if the board chooses to have one, so again, that is, if you wanna look at an opportunity of reducing that increase, that is an opportunity. Your questions regarding what is that twenty-five hundred dollars for the newly-elected B O C members, that goes back to the fact that if you have three new commissioners, you know, there are their, their inauguration, that's usually associated with it, there are, you know, some equipment that is usually there as well, even though we can easily transfer the, the, the surface equipment, Surface Pro, but again, that is what it is, so what is the twenty-five hundred dollars specifically for, again, new board photos, you know, again, new board Surface Pros and those kinds of things? So, again, we can spell that out if necessary. And then, there is an eighteen hundred dollar increase regarding the board's strategy sessions, I mean, meaning we've had one, or two actually, board strategy sessions that we've had so far, but again, we need to have more of those and more workshops, so that's what that eighteen hundred dollar increase is for. And then, on the nineteen hundred dollar miscellaneous there, there's four hundred dollars worth of tires that goes on, that is planned from fleet maintenance that says that, you know, we need to get the tires, but the other fifteen hundred dollars that is there, and as you can see, is noted as a low priority regarding that, that same thing that we're hearing from the other departments about the flooring that is outdated, and there's a health issue, that stuff has been there for a long time, so again, low priority for that.
So, so for Brad, I know you've been working on the fleet maintenance, that nineteen hundred dollars out of the commissions, but that, that, the vehicles are, should be part of our fleet?
That is, Commissioners, for the Explorer, anything you guys use, that can be moved over to the fleet?
Okay, so we can take that, yeah.
No, 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 it's only four hundred dollars for the tires, that nineteen hundred dollars is miscellaneous, is four hundred dollars for the tire, and then fifteen dollars for some flooring replacement if we keep it.
So you can use the same nineteen for, for the floor replacement if you want to, but I just wanna take the tires off of that, 'cause that should, that should be upon the fleet, and then even the nineteen hundred should be upon the facilities maintenance.
So every, every department commissioner has a.
What I don't wanna do is, I don't wanna create a commissioner's budget with stuff in it that shouldn't be under a commissioner's budget, and I think a lot of this should not be under, that shouldn't be under commissioner's budget, that should be under facilities, that should be under the vehicles, and the rest of it is fine, I want this newly-elected board member stuff spelled out, because what I wouldn't want to happen is, like when Commissioner Thomas came in, she was the only new commissioner, Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Barham, didn't need a whole lot of balloons and bangs and all that stuff for that, so we need to spell out what that twenty-five hundred dollars can be used for, because we don't want a new commissioner coming in thinking that they got a twenty-five hundred dollar swearing-in party.
Well, we can, we can definitely clarify that, I will tell you that it's only a one thousand dollars for all three, if they come in just for those types of, oh, eight, actually one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for whatever the inauguration could be related to, and again, you're right, it's not much for three, but we will spell that out for each one of those categories, I'll just take this information that I have and pull it and just put it in there, and I'll send it to each of you as well. Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Wilson, and then I'll come to Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Wilson.
Has that lobbyist always come, so the county has had a lobbyist before, I remember in twenty sixteen, it was, it was all on the news about a lobbyist that the county had, I think Gary got that lobbyist in here, but was that under the county, was that under the commissioner's budget?
Yes, Commissioner Clemens, it's always been under the Board of Commissioners' budget.
And so, if a lobbyist is, so I want us to look at other jurisdictions that have lobbyists and see if that's it, and if it's up under the commissioners' budget, how's that lobbyist selected, is this something that the chair would just decide who the lobbyist is, or how does, how's that lobbyist?
The current, it should be the board, the current lobbyist, because it was professional services, and we needed to retain a lobbyist fairly quickly when we were trying to create the Urban Redevelopment Agency, there were three firms that actually reached out to both myself and Mr. Johnson, and in meeting with those firms, this group was actually selected, I think it's William Woodall, and I can't think of the name of the group, Taylor English, sorry, I could not think of it, they were actually retained. It was my understanding that we were only keeping them through this previous legislative session, because we needed someone to help get the legislation passed for the Urban Redevelopment Group. Typically jurisdictions do have lobbyists when we have a legislative agenda, or if we're following bills that are at the legislative level that we wanna make sure that we're keeping a track on, and what I wanted to confirm from staff, I understood that we were through paying them, because their contract has actually expired, but it appears that we have been paying them the additional four thousand dollars, but no work has been given to the lobbyists at all.
And, I don't, I don't ever remember seeing where they were giving a specific duty to do with measurables and to see if it was completed.
They were not, because the only reason they were retained was for us to get them to get the legislation passed for the Urban Redevelopment Agency, so that we could have another funding source for capital projects, and so that was the.
And that can only be done during legislative session.
That was last year, that's what I'm saying, and so.
Last year, it wasn't done?
It was, they were actually successful in getting that, yes, I'm sorry, yes, that was done. They haven't been given any work for this fiscal year, although we're still paying them, and so what I need to do is pull the contract and just notify them that we're gonna term that contract out, because I don't believe we're under a contract with them.
So legislation ended March twenty nineteen, and it was done, and we've continued to pay them with no agenda.
Well, keep in mind, one of the things, and I can't remember which meeting, but I'll go back and find it, we asked the board, what are some of your legislative items that we needed to pursue, when we had the meeting with the legislators, I think it was back in December, November or December, and one of the things we asked the board was to give us a list of things that we wanted to pursue at a county level.
Well, I want a T A D, and I've been asking for it for three years, and we've been paying somebody, we still don't have that done.
Well, now that I've confirmed that, we will definitely, I'll reach out to Mr. Woodall, and now, if the board wants us to look at other lobbyists, we can certainly do that. Again, the decision was made for Mr. Woodall, only because we were in such a hurry to get that Urban Redevelopment Agency approved, and so that was really the only reason we secured his services. Unfortunately, they don't do a, we couldn't, we didn't have a month-to-month option, and so we had to do a long term.
He would've done whatever we asked him to do, we just didn't ask him to do anything.
Because there was no legislative agenda, so part of this conversation that we're having, and the one-on-ones that we've had with you all, is so that we can identify some countywide legislative items that we wanna pursue, the T A Ds may be one of them, but there's also bills that are being dropped that we need to talk through. Judge Jones mentioned the technology fee, that could be something that if this board wanted to pursue, we could have our lobbyists reaching out to our local delegation to say either we support it or not support it, but that's where you all have gotta give us some, some direction in that.
And we don't have any opportunity zones, so I mean, it's a whole lot of stuff that I can give them to do, if, I don't, I don't think I was, I don't think I knew, that's why I really would like for us, as a board, to start looking at committees and, and, and kinda breaking up some of this stuff, because I, I honestly, I missed it, I'm sure you guys presented it, I missed the fact that we've been, we were still paying a lobbyist every month, and did not have, had, had not given them anything to do.
So again, Commissioner Clemens, I'm going to go back and look at the contract, because I have some correspondence with the lobbyist, identifying that I had no intent on pursuing or at least extending the contract until the Board of Commissioners defined a true legislative agenda. Mr. Woodall mentioned to me that he had reached out to some commissioners to talk to them about what some items were, but I explained to him, because initially, he was going to be invited to our legislative breakfast that we had, and at that time, I think an email went out asking the board, are there any items that you all want our legislators to consider? At that time, I don't think there, no, no one responded that there are any specific items outside of what A C C G had already prepared, and that was what was presented, and at that time, I said, well, there's no need for him to be here, if we don't have any items.
I hope that we can empower you as our county manager, you know, a lot of this legislative stuff, like the T A Ds, and we're trying to do an economic development plan, we want T A Ds throughout the county, we want C I Ds throughout the county, to just, if, if we're paying somebody, we got somebody, just give it to them, don't give them a one item, I mean, we're, we're giving you that, I mean, that's part of what you're supposed to do, so don't wait on us, don't let people get money free.
Got it.
Okay, anything else?
No, good.
Okay, and we'll come to Commissioner Holmes, and then I wanna talk some more about the lobbyist as well, so, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, wait a minute, it was Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Holmes, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
So I'm not looking at an itemized B O C budget, all I have is, it's kind of a break, breakdown, so, I think we should treat our budget like we've asked every other department to treat their budget, so when we go in to see our needs and what it wants, and see what we can cut, and what we, what we're using, not they're gonna use, I think we need to look at that, that kinda sets, and we should've looked at office first, kinda set the tone for what everybody else is doing with theirs. So, with that, I think last year, if I remember, we increased our travel and education budget to ten thousand dollars, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
So that's what I'm reading here, but looking at the percentages over here to the side, is, we have some commissioners that use nine percent of that up till date, fourteen percent, thirty-one percent, and I'm looking at sixty-four percent and twenty-three percent, so with that being said, it looks like we're not gonna utilize the ten thousand dollars, like we need to cut that half in two, do that back to five thousand dollars.
Wait, 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 Commissioner Wilson has the floor, and then we're gonna go to Commissioner Holmes.
If we're not gonna use it, we need to hand it back in and utilize that money somewhere else, and also, when the last year's budget, I think there was some monies put aside for constituent aides, with that constituent aides, I do not have one, don't intend to have one, and them monies need to be removed from the budget as well, and to create a position in administrative assistance office for us, in the B O C side, so, if we're gonna ask the other departments to do to cut their budget, things they're not gonna use, we need to be doing the same thing, so that's my comments.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Back to the lobbyists, in full disclosure, I've, I had a few meetings with Mr. Woodall last year to discuss various road projects, not just in my district, but around the county, so I'm not exactly sure what happened with the follow-up with the other commissioners, but, you know, I, I know Mr. Woodall, and he's, he's a pretty good lobbyist, and he tends to get things done, but for some strange reason, we haven't been able to get anything moved forward from a county perspective over the last few months. Lastly, opportunity zones, a few months ago, there was a huge deal about opportunity zones, and it seems like every county around us were designated areas for opportunity zones, but, as always, Henry County missed out, so my question is, how the heck did we miss out on any type of opportunity zones designate, designated in the South Metro, when Clayton and other counties in this particular area were able to benefit from it?
So, Commissioner Holmes, you're gonna have to give me a little more information in terms of who, who actually provided this designation, I know your opportunity zones are definitely based on your population, based on your demographics, and so, give me a little more information so I can research it.
Well, apparently, leadership at the county level should've, you know, would've been working with the state to advocate for opportunity zones in their particular area, and we were one of the only major metropolitan counties who didn't benefit from it at all.
Okay, that's not something that I was made aware of.
I think Commissioner Clemens knows a little bit about it.
Okay, and so, I'm gonna come now, one, regarding the lobbyist, I do fully agree that if this is gonna fall under the Board of Commissioners' budget, that the Board of Commissioners definitely need to, you know, have the lead in making the selection and identifying what it is that the lobbyist's doing, because again, I too discovered, you know, that we had a lobbyist and that, 'cause I too thought it was coming from the county manager's budget, but again, this just says that if we're gonna have a lobbyist, we need to make sure that we've got a joint agenda of what we want this person to do, so that's number one. I did not have any conversations with any lobbyists, lobbyists regarding transparency. Regarding opportunity zones, I, I do agree that we need to pursue that, I know that I've been trying to educate more about opportunity zones, and if Henry County needed a, a, a strategy differently, that's why we, as a board, need to talk about those things, so that at least we're, at least sounding with the same voice on that, so I'd be more than happy to welcome any information on that, so that I can do what I can, and ask each of the commissioners to do the same, because that's the key thing, we all need to be trying to pursue the same strategy, so, so that's the other thing. Regarding the constituent aides, I still believe, as I've stated before, that we need one that would serve these, this Board of Commissioners, because there are lots of questions, I know the executive assistant is spending a lot of time fielding questions, working out here in the lobby to, to address constituents when they're walking up, and she's doing that on behalf of the board, I do know that we are moving forward with the deputy county clerk, and so hopefully, that would help fill in some gaps for backup, whenever we need some support from these Board of Commissioners meetings, and that's been my position all along regarding constituent aides. So any other questions or comments, Commissioner Barham, and then I think I saw Commissioner Thomas, and then Commissioner Clemens.
Yes, back to Commissioners Wilson's comments, so, we've heard a lot today, and I know y'all heard a lot yesterday, and this is the first time that we've actually had an opportunity to look at this, but y'all hadn't asked anybody to cut anything yet, have you?
No, sir.
Okay, I just wanna confirm that, and I'm sure, with all the needs we have, we gonna have to do some cutting, and I agree with the chair and Commissioner Wilson, that it would be nice if we could hire somebody to help somebody, help Michelle with some of our stuff back there, who that person will be, it doesn't matter to me, but we need somebody, and I, are we looking to fill somebody that would go out in the field and do field work, or are we looking for somebody to do clerical work, I mean, what's?
Well, I think that's a very good question, because there's a little bit of confusion of what is the responsibilities of the constituent aides that we do have now, and there is a job description that exists right now, and so the question is, is the job description appropriate, or do we need to change it, and what is the, you know, purpose of the constituent aides, are we comfortable with what we've got them doing, or whatever, for those that have them?
And my only other thing is, is lobbyists, this is the first I seen, and I'd like to know which direction this board wants to, for this lobbyist to go, before we determine this, that we're gonna put this money in the budget, I think that needs to be clarified, and, you know, I, I know we got travel expenses like everybody else, and, and we heard today that people are paying for some of this stuff out of their own pocket, and, and that concerns me. We've got employers having to pay for their own training, that's required of them to have the job that they have, that's, that's wrong for us to allow them to pay for their own training, so I hope we're gonna address all those issues, but, you know, if we don't spend all the money that's set aside for traveling, that goes back in the general fund, and, and, so I, that's just my comment, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, and then Commissioner Clemens.
My comment goes back to the sixty-four thousand dollars, I mean, the forty-eight thousand dollars that's set aside for the lobbyists, I would like to see the forty-eight thousand dollars stay in place, but I like to see it slash, say lobbyists, slash professional services, slash conference dollars, so you're just not locked into one thing, because there are some things that we need to do, meaning we may need to have another conference, we may need to have another consultant, there may need to be some other professional services that this board needs, but I don't wanna just say lobbyists, I like to see it categorized, where we can use it for the betterment of the board.
And that's a good point, let me just clarify that the dollars by which the lobbyist is budgeted, it does say professional contract services, if I'm correct with that, so it's, so I, so this was a way to kinda describe what the dollars were being allocated to, but it is in a general professional services account, and I totally agree with you, I think that whatever we do, we need to have a plan for how that money is gonna be used, and it needs to be something that is gonna be significant to bring back a benefit to the county as well, so I agree with you.
I just want it locked into one category like it was here.
And it's not.
But I think the dollars should be there, this board has, will have other needs as we develop, and we may need to bring in some other people to help us with those needs, and we need to have those dollars set aside for that.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner Thomas, you done?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Sherry, I would think that this board should always have a legislative agenda, and so, every year, we should have a legislative agenda. I would like for you to have those opportunities where you're talking to each one of the commissioners, kinda hearing what they're saying, figuring out what is, what should be part of the legislative agenda based on the needs that we have in our specific districts or countywide, and then, if you could present to us a legislative agenda, we need to figure out what, what timeframe, like, should that be done in January, should it be done in October for the next year coming up, or when should it be done? So by the time we get to the budget for the lobbyist, we know what the legislative agenda is, maybe we don't all get together and figure that out as one, but you can have various meetings with the commissioners to come up with it, and then when you present that resolution to us, and we adopt the legislative agenda annually, then commissioners have at that time to add to that legislative agenda or take away from that legislative agenda, but if we, if this, as a board, if we can't collectively come up with something, that's why we have our county manager to present a legislative agenda to us. I know that we've had a hard time with that, with our road projects, I think we were dealing with what was gonna go on there for road improvements, for funding, when we did the eighty-twenty funding, but I think that we need that from you, and we need to figure out what month is that, because if we put it in the budget now, we still have until next year, June, but there will be another time that legislation comes in, and then they also need to be working on it between now and then, especially with these road projects and, and the monies that we have allocated from D O T.
I got it, thank you.
Okay. Well, and, and I wanna say, I wanna commend you, because I know you did reach out to every one of the commissioners to identify some legislative matters, because that was also part of what was gonna go into the A C C G, I do totally agree that we need to do it sooner than later, I think before, I think A C C G's legislative conference is in October or so, but we obviously need something before October, and then definitely, so that when we have another joint legislative luncheon, we already have a legislative agenda that comes forth from the county, so, but that's for the next legislative session, but if there is anything that we need to identify now, which we've identified opportunity zones and some other things that we even heard from our. But if there is anything that we need to identify now, which we've identified opportunity zones and some other things that we even heard from our. Our, um, our, our judges today, then that could be something that we obviously may need to reemploy. Um, you know, if it is something that the board can agree to. Okay.
I am not talking about the same thing Chair Wood is talking about. I'm not, uh, the ACCG legislative agenda is not my Henry County agenda. I'm talking about if we're paying a lobbyist, I don't wanna be paying a lobbyist to legislate or to lobby for ACCG's legislative agenda. Because they have lobbyists for that. They pay a lot of money for the lobbyists for that. This legislative agenda needs to be Henry County specific. Um, especially if we're paying lobbyists out of our, uh, text, uh, digest. So this, this legislative agenda that I'm speaking of, that you need to bring to us, needs to be about Henry County. And I know that there was an email that said, you know, what are your concerns on the legislative agenda for ACCG? Um, and I think Chair Wood, uh, was our representative and I think, um, Chair, um, and, um, Commissioner Thomas added to that. And I've watched those legislations too, but this one, this right here specifically, I was talking about for the county. Cause you've been saying, we need, we need to get together as a board. We need to know what our strategy, what our agendas. This is what I, this is what this needs to be for. So when you present a legislative agenda to us, make sure it's Henry County specific and not state specific, uh, ACCG specific. But something that's gonna benefit this county.
And out of all due respect, it was the Henry County, um, legislative agenda items that we were, were speaking about. So, um, no, but we just hear it. It was two different, I mean, cause we tried to get a Henry County, um, legislative agenda before we actually had a meeting with the legislators in December. So it was specifically, uh, we didn't come together on it. I mean, and then of course you had ACCG which was separate. That one is a whole different, uh, uh, animal. But locally, uh, we wanted to tell the Henry County legislators basically what it is that the county is responding to. And so I agree with you, we've got to identify what's specific to Henry County and it may or may not line up with ACCG. But we've got some specific things that are local to us, um, that we need to address. So I agree with you and I agree with you that we also need to do it in a timely fashion. So that again, um, they've got something that they hear from the board on. So again, legislative agenda, need to come up with something if there are some items identified right now that we need to identify. The, uh, Board of Commissioners need to identify and submit those to you. Um, and then again, as we prepare for the next session, uh, we need to make sure that we've got a joint legislative agenda as well. Okay? What other questions that you have? And I will say that the information that, um, that you have, this is, I'll, I'll make sure I send this to you all. Um, but again, uh, the information is the same, about the same information that's in your board book that was given. Um, I will, uh, tell, I've asked Michelle to make sure that she at least starts sending information to you all on a monthly basis. So that this is not just a once a year type of a thing, that you're able to see what is budgeted, what the actuals are. And actually by a council that you see what's going on. Um, so I think we need to have more conversation, um, based on, um, the legislative agenda. Obviously there were some thoughts about the constituent aides. There, obviously there were some thoughts about the, um, certification. And so those are things that we need to at least give back to this team, um, about where, um, where we think we should be. Or have a, another discussion about it at some time down the road. Any other thoughts? Okay, well Sherry, if you can, David can do what we've asked you to do yesterday is to review the timeline. Uh, we've heard now from all of the departments and all of the judicial team and even the Board of Commissioners budget, um, today. So if you'll just review our next steps, especially for this board. I know you all have got a lot of internal meetings that are going on. Um, but if you can summarize, you know, the next steps for this board, that would be great.
And so Chair, let me, I wanna make sure I'm clear because what I don't wanna do is leave this meeting not understanding exactly what the board wants to do with their budget. Cause I know there's been a lot of conversation back and forth in terms of, I think I heard Commissioner Wilson mentioned another administrative assistant, which is not included in this budget. But if that's something that the majority of the board wants to consider, we can certainly do that. Um, I hear constituent aides, I hear if you're not gonna use a constituent aide, it can go to other services. I need clarification so, because this continues to be a question that's asked every single month in terms of what we're gonna do. Right now, the board has an increase of about sixty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I certainly understand the items, but where, where I'm, need some input from the board. Is I'm understanding that we definitely want to have a legislative agenda. Um, we can go back mid-year if we need to and look at adding the cost for the lobbyists. Or we can keep it under professional services with the understanding that it's under professional services. If the board elects not to use a lobbyist, those funds will be available under professional services for any other professional items that the board wants to consider. So we can definitely look at that, but I need some clarification from the board in terms of, am I looking at including the constituent aides? Similar to how it was for this previous fiscal year? Or are we looking at constituent aides plus another administrative assistant or something separate? And that's what I need to get some clarification on.
Okay, I see Commissioner Holmes has got.
For the commissioners who want it and the commissioners that want, don't want it. I mean, don't put theirs in the budget. I mean, that's just a simple solution.
Okay, uh, okay, Commissioner Wilson, uh, Commissioner. Okay, so Commissioner, I didn't see you. So, you know, I tried to do things in order. Say go to Commissioner Clemens and then we go to Commissioner Wilson.
Well, Commissioner Wilson said it, uh, best, use it or lose it. You know, if it's in there and you don't use it, then it needs to go back. And we're at March now, so of course, uh, the ACCG conferences and trainings and stuff. If you're looking at today, what, what's been spent, it won't be spent by March. Because conferences don't come back up until April, May, June, July. So I think that we need, you'll have to look at it probably July, August. Cause if you cut it now, you really don't know what you've used. So you have to look at it, you know, in a full cycle to see what you didn't use and then like you said, use it or lose it.
Oh, wait a minute, let me make sure, are you done?
Well, I would like, we're, can we have discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that we can kinda, we can kinda figure out what that next conference is gonna cost and add it to what we've already spent.
Right.
And so it kinda gives us, cause we all attend the same type of training every year. Commissioner Thomas, now she's spent a little bit more because she had to go through her new commissioner training. So once we figure out what we're gonna spend every year, I think we need to budget to that. Instead of going to a ten thousand dollar mark, we need to figure out if we're spending five, that's what we need to put in the budget for the next coming year. It's five thousand dollars. But my recommendation as far as constituent aides, do away with the constituent aides. And put that money toward a, an executive assistant, administrative assistant. With that, we can, um, with money that we save from the travel and education and the constituent aide. We can offset some of this sixty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, well more discussion about that, especially for those who have constituent aide.
So that's my recommendation.
I agree with Commissioner Holmes. Those who don't want it, don't have to have it. I mean, Chair graciously said she didn't need it and she, hers is not in there. Um, if the other commissioners don't need it, then that's fine. But I can tell you, I can, if you look at the job description, I can tell you that I split it up into, to people. And the work that needed to be done got done from, um, from the census stuff to, uh, helping with the job fair. To stuff that we need to do for our constituents got done. And so I utilize them, um, for constituent stuff. Tonight, it's a HOA meeting. They're already, uh, packing up stuff with Michelle, um, stapling stuff together, making copies that Michelle can't get done. Because she's busy working for six commissioners and doing everything else. So if you don't need it and you don't go to HOA meetings, I probably have a HOA meeting once every two months or twice, sometimes two or three a month. Um, so yeah, I, I, this is part-time and I do need somebody that can call up the HOA, what time, um, you know, what do you need? What are the discussions about? Michelle can't do all of that. And Michelle probably utilized them as her assistants more than I do. Um, so, I mean, if you don't need it, then that's fine, but, uh, you can turn in the money at the end of the month. I need it budgeted, just in case I need it. So if there was one, any discussions about what they do or how you can utilize them to help reach your constituents, I'm happy to do that as well.
All right, other thoughts? Well, um, I'm sorry. Okay, what, I'm sorry, Commissioner Thomas.
I don't particularly care what you call the budget, just leave my budget in place. Cause I use mine differently. Okay? So however, this particular person used theirs and how they used theirs, I don't try to follow it. I know what my plans are. And I know I've got some things I'm going to that would be outside of the box. I've been outside the box ever since I've been here. And I will continue to operate like that. But I'm going to make sure whatever I do is gonna be reflective of things I need to know about being the best county commissioner I can be. Which means I have to oversee a lot of things. And if I decide to go to a, hit me some, park and recreation, uh, conference, I am going. Cause I've got three parks, four parks, whatever it is, that I need to have redone. And I have land that's being donated for another one. And I'm not gonna just leave it up to one or two people to make those decisions for me. So leave my budget, you can call it whatever you choose to call it, but leave my budget in place.
Okay, so wait a minute. I wanna now hear from those who don't have constituent aides included. You've heard my statement about it. Um, but I'd like to hear from those who do not have constituent aides. Um, what are your thoughts?
I'm not utilizing mine at all.
This, this is why we don't have opportunity zones, cause we're focused on a constituent aide when we should be focused on larger things. You know? We're sort of being whined about a part-time position when we have, uh, infrastructure needs. We have, uh, uh, economic development needs. There are so many needs and we're up here wasting, you know, TV time. On a eighteen thousand dollar position. It makes absolutely no sense.
Wait, 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 Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Holmes has the floor and they will come to Commissioner Wilson.
So, I mean, so, yeah, we're talking about the BOC budget, but you have commissioners up here that are utilizing the budget. To, you know, to, to, to reach the constituents and do the best thing we can for, for our citizens. So if you guys don't want that money in your budget, let's ta, take the money out and we'll put it somewhere else. But there's no, it makes no sense for us to be sitting up here arguing and debating on something that three commissioners want and three commissioners don't. It's already in the budget. If you wanna, if we wanna reduce your budget, we can reduce it. If we, if you wanna keep your budget the way it is, we can keep your budget the way it is. But there's really no argument. Let's, 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 let's put a vision in place and think about something that's bigger. And try to improve this county for the years to come.
Commissioner Holmes, I'm not arguing, I'm just making a statement.
Okay, are you done, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please state your thoughts.
I'm not arguing, I'm just making a statement. So.
Okay, well, it sounds like, um, from what I'm hearing, to give the county managers some guidance, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bar. I'm sorry.
You know, I would prefer we have one person to, to help Michelle and maybe we, y'all to do is look at adding a position for her. To have an assistant too, but, um, you know, the budget's been presented here. And at this time, I don't think we oughta cut or do anything till the cutting starts. And then, then see where we are. Uh, I know, Sherry, that you got your hands full with all the needs we have to count in. It's gonna be hard for you to balance out all this stuff that you gotta do and, and, uh, we heard a lot of needs today. But, uh, at this time, I think we need to leave the budget as it's been presented. And then, uh, when you start coming back and then when we start doing the cutting, let's do the cutting. But, uh, I think it's just a waste of time for us to sit up here and argue about constituent aides. Cause we're not gonna get anywhere with that today. So, uh, anyway, that's just my thought.
Okay. All right, so, um, I've heard a couple of things. Um, and so it sounds like the majority and then y'all, I'm just gonna do ahead and it sounds like every, uh, those that have the budget wants, wanted to stay the same. Um, regarding constituent aides and travel and training, um, uh, is, is what I've heard. I think I've heard also that there were comments that it, that those constituent aides should, um, uh, be consolidated to one, to give some, some, um, assistance to, especially Michelle. So this is good discussion, Sherry. Um, we obviously, um, don't have yet, um, some, some decisions to give to you on that. Uh, but what I did hear that we've agreed to is that regarding the, um, the lobbyists, we're gonna call it professional services. We need a, a consolidated legislative agenda on matters for the county. And that, uh, we're gonna leave that budget there until we decide what that legislative agenda is. So obviously, you know, that's kinda where we are right now. So it sounds like to me, it's, um.
That's not what I heard.
What, what did you hear?
I heard the majority of the people up here said that we're leaving this just like it is being presented. And we'll deal with it at the end if there needs to be some cut somewhere. And that's what I heard from at least four of us up here. So all this other talk, still talking about this constituent aide, the majority said, leave everything the way it is. You got your hands full already. When we get to the end of the budget, if we see that we need to cut something, then we'll go to cutting. But everybody was, um, clear on this right here. The only thing that we asked for out of what's been presented before this here is just to break the line items down. Um, and spell it out and make sure that if it's, um, you know, keep the nineteen hundred, um, where it is. But put the four hundred over in fleet and then nineteen would just be for whatever. Um, as the chair said, that, um, the lobbyists would just say lobbyists, it's already professional services. So that stays the way, and everything stays the same. So from the majority that I heard up here, although we're not taking a vote, was just to leave it the way it is. We get down to the end, if we see that we a hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand, three hundred dollars short, then we'll deal with cutting then. And that's, that's what the majority said.
And thank you for summarizing what I said. So thank you. Okay, Commissioner, um, Farm.
Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm what I was saying is, is we've had a lot of stuff presented to us today about a lot of needs. And, uh, you know, there's gonna have to be another second round on this, third round and probably a fourth round before we get to the bottom line. But, um, I, I'm not saying I agree with us constituent aides, but I, I think at this time, we oughta leave the budget like it is. And, uh, and then when we make this second round and we gonna be having a lot of discussion about this budget. Didn't you say it was like eight, eighteen million dollars more?
Yes, sir. We, we are over by eighteen million dollars. So sixty-four thousand dollar increase doesn't even get close to what we've got to look at for our budget. Um, one of the things I've heard a lot of the board members talk about today is the needs within those departments. And that's the one thing that I, I certainly pride our staff on in asking those questions in terms of what's a mandate, what's a priority and what's a won't. And so we are a growing community, but I'll ask each board member to remember when we had our one-on-ones. One of the first questions we asked of the board is what are your priorities? And from each board member, I can tell you consistently I heard parks and roads. And so our focus is going to be on making sure that we're putting funding towards those priority items. Um, I know quality of life was really big for some of the commissioners in terms of having activities at some of our parks. And so we're gonna focus on that, but also understand I need the support of this board to be able to tell some departments, we're not gonna be able to do it in this budget. It's great to wanna create a new division of something, but right now, what are our priorities? All of our departments have priorities outs, even outside of our judicial group, we have a lot of priorities. And we have a lot of needs that no one sitting here today didn't take care of. And so a lot of what you all are hearing in terms of buildings falling apart, water leaking, that didn't happen yesterday. That didn't happen four years ago. It's been an ongoing issue. And this board took the initiative last Tuesday to say, we're gonna take a step further. Now, I wanna make sure I clarify something because it was disheartening for me to hear that we have staff members that are paying for their own training. If staff members are doing that for the record, that is because they elect to do that. We have travel and training requests that come in from every department. And I can tell you, the only reason travel and training is denied is because either we've determined that it's a closer location to do that training. Or there's a webinar that's available for it, but no staff member should be paying for training out of their pocket. Every department has a line item for training. The, the difference between how we've done the budget in the last two years and how we've done the budget last year and the last previous year. Is we've been giving departments money and they haven't been spending the money. And so when they come before the board and they tell you, well, I didn't receive the same amount that I received last year, it's because they weren't spending the money. And that's why we were so dependent on our fund balance. Uh, we didn't just go in and create the will and say, oh, you know, we, we found a way to do it. We've just given departments what they needed to function. And we're not trying to tell people, you can't do anything or can't do something. But what we want people to understand is work within your means. It's like your budget at home. You have a certain budget that you utilize. And so I will tell this board, I will not look to cut the Board of Commissioners budget. You all know what you need for your respective units. I'm not gonna come in and say, well, I don't think you need to add four hundred dollars to tires, batteries and parts because you know what your needs are within your respective unit. But what I will do is sit down with each cluster leader and go over each individual department's budget. Um, and I think there's a way for us to cut some of our budgets. Also want the board to understand, it's great when we compare ourselves to other municipalities and jurisdictions. But also want the board to remember that those municipalities and jurisdictions that we're comparing ourselves to, their millage rate is not the same rate that we have. And so when we compare ourselves to a Clayton County that has a fifteen point three-three millage rate, it's not comparable to Henry County at a twelve point seven-three-three millage rate. If we want to get to that point, then we have to raise our millage rate. Um, right now, the budget that is at that one hundred and seventy-five million dollar number, that would result in about a half a mill increase to our millage rate. And if the board is saying, a majority of the board raises their hand and says, this is the budget that we want to set at a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. Then understand, when I come back and we start talking about mill- then understand, when I come back and we start talking about millage, we've got to fund the budget that we've approved. And so I want the board to be aware of that as well. But our staff will get through it, we've done it before. And again, again, I'm going to ask for the support of the board to make sure that we are getting in the budget the things that you all have identified as priorities for the county. And keep in mind, it's just like our CIP, it's a five-year plan. We may not get it in this fiscal year, but we can plan for it for those upcoming years.
All right, I see Commissioner Holmes, and then I've got a comment. I think, oh, I'm sorry, you still, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the question, we got into all that other. But I just want to make a comment that I want to commend you, Sherri, and your staff for doing this budget the way you're doing it this year. You know, we've never had that involvement before since I've been here that we've had here today. And sorry, I missed yesterday, but I want to commend you and staff for doing it this way. It really kind of brought us up front what's really going on in these other departments. You know, we hear this and hear that, but we really didn't have a feel till we had today. And I appreciate what your staff has done. And we're going to get through this, and I just appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Holmes, okay, you know, okay. Well, my thoughts are, I just believe that we've got to continue to focus on the needs versus the wants. So thank you all for, you know, setting that foundation for the departments. And I think that the board needs to operate by those same principles. We are the leaders, we need to set the precedence on identifying the needs versus the wants. That's why I personally have said, I don't think I want to do this because, again, if the money can go to something else that is going to support the needs of the departments that are serving the citizens, that is the most important thing, in my opinion. So I look forward to more conversations about as we get through this budget, is a thought I'd like to share. One other thing I asked that we do, you've made a mention of the millage rate. And by the time we get through this whole process, what I would love to see is, what is it that, what is, what part of the millage rate, whatever it may be, is related to public safety? And what part of it is going to, is related to judicial? I think it would be good to have that level of a breakdown.
Okay, I think, let me go to Commissioner Thomas, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Barr. Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Sherri, it would be helpful, not only for us, but for those who are watching us as well, if maybe you would have someone to give just a little report on other jurisdictions as what their budgets are and their millage rate. Because so often people say, why can't we do this like somebody else? Why can't you all do that like somebody else? You're about the same size, we have about the same population. But they don't understand that our millage rate is not as high as theirs, and we've been working to keep that rate down. And I do understand that you stated that we may have to look at an increase. But as we do this, let's try to educate those who are watching us so when we do ask for that, if we have to ask for that, they would know how we compare to other counties to make that happen. And one other thing, if you look for, when you're doing your reports, I know we've actually do quite a few reports, from the lease to the contracts and what have you. But we got to go back to and figure out SROs. I know we're reimbursed for that, but we're not reimbursed for benefits, I think. Something of that nature. Are we reimbursed for benefits? So we need to think about, we talked about one time, what are we going to do with SROs? Will they stay under us, or will they go back to the Board of Education? And crossing guards, remember you look for some type of contract or some type of memorandum of understanding, and there's nothing there that we're operating on? We need to define that and decide what our liability is. And we also need to determine if there are any other groups that we do not have a memorandum of understanding under or something that they are operating under us, but they're not a part of the county of some form or fashion. So please, let's clean up what we have. Because we may find dollars available that we didn't know are out there that needs to come back to our budget, okay?
And Commissioner Thomas, just clarification on the school resource officers. We receive total reimbursement for salaries and benefits. Everything outside of that, training, vehicles, and equipment, that is county cost. So I just wanted to clarify.
Well, we need to talk about that. Because we had one time started talking about those two entities to decide if we want the Board of Education to have them back under them. And let's remember, the Board of Education has a much bigger budget than we do. A much bigger budget than we do.
Okay, Commissioner Barr, and then Commissioner Holmes.
Yes, and our citizens need to be reminded that we have the frozen property values. We're kind of, we got that black leg on us right there that we can't do nothing about. And it's like a black spider bit us or something. But we can't do anything about that. That was something the legislators did years ago, and we're stuck with that. And they need to be reminded of that as well. And Chair, you brought up several good points, Sam. And, but anyway, we'll have to have more discussion on that.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes.
So Sherri, with regards to comparing millage rates between counties, you probably need to explain that the value of a mill is different from county to county. So a county like Clayton, even though their millage rate is a lot higher than ours, the value of each mill is a lot less than ours. So, you know, you can't compare us to a Cobb County who may have a six or seven millage rate because they're collecting triple the amount per mill than we are. So I think people really need to understand that.
That's absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions? Well, okay, well, that concludes the Board of Commissioners' Department budget and discussion. And we'll follow up with all the items that were discussed. Okay, so at this point, there is no other items for the agenda. So we now will open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Oh, okay, all in favor? Consider the meeting adjourned.